It is approximately 4:03 and I am going to call the Curriculum and Programs Subcommittee to order. And on the line, we have Ms. Barbara Gresham, who is also on this Subcommittee. The first item on the agenda is vote to recommend to the full school committee that it approve the fourth quarter remote learning and grade. I'm so sorry, Teri, I can't see the rest of that.
And grading.
Oh, and grading.
For the remainder of the 2019-20 school year.
Fantastic. Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Can I kick it over to you?
Please. So our team has been working on a grading plan and the remote learn tied to our remote learning plan. Paul and Stefania have led the work on that. I'm going to turn it over to them in a second. Commissioner recommended consider a credit, no credit, policy across the state relative to grading. We agree that that's a very wise move. As you remember, we closed third quarter. We actually closed the grades March 12th, the last day we were in full session, and gave the students what they earned up to that point. But now we're into this fourth quarter and we had to come up with something that, given all, given the remote learning would work and be fair to all of our students relative to a reasonable grading policy. So Paul and Stefania are going to walk you through what the cabinet is recommending for the school committee for approval on our grading plan.
So I'm going to start out first with the remote learning expectations and then when we get into grading, Paul's going to take it over. So I'm going to summarize it. I'm not going to read through the whole entire thing, but we use recommendations based on the recommendations put forth through the commissioner. And so that is in there along with some of the curriculum pieces that we use in Springfield. So at the elementary level, we're asking that learning activities should be provided to, and they should take about half of a school day, which is about three hours and 15 hours over the course of a week. And that includes all content area subjects with music, art, and gym. So we're not expecting a kid to be sitting idle facing the computer for three hours. All students, we're expecting them to participate in 45 minutes in reading and 45 minutes of math in iReady. That's something that we were using during the school year. And we've made the computers available to families that needed them. But if there is an accommodation necessary because they can't get online or they don't have a device, schools and teachers will make accommodations. In some cases, they're giving them, sending other documents to the home if that is a problem. Schools are also providing guidance to parents on how much time students should spend on each subject for the week. And we are, the schools are giving that because each school has, may have, some kids have art right now, some have music, they don't all have the same content right now. Schools and teachers' teams are being asked to coordinate with students and families so they're only getting one communication a week because we don't want students and families being overwhelmed that have multiple children getting multiple messages every Most learning activities need to be designed to be completed independently by the student with clear directions and appropriate scaffolding. We're asking that any direct teacher-led instructional activities be pre-recorded as much as possible because this gives families and students the opportunity, if they can't be online at that exact time, they could still get the lesson and do the work after. For direct teacher-led instructional activities, excuse me, no, next bullet, if teachers are engaging directly with each class, we're asking that they do this once a week with families. And that would be to clarify if they gave the assignment the prior week, they are then communicating and explaining how to do it, or if students have any questions at that In addition to the weekly direct communication with the class, teachers are asked to communicate with all students. So just to check, we're asking them to check their messages and respond within 24 hours. So if you're giving assignments and the students or the families aren't understanding them and they're emailing you or contacting you or asking that teachers respond within 24 hours unless it's a holiday or a weekend. In consultation with special ed and ESL teachers, we need students to be provided their services or accommodations as needed. And finally, grades for the fourth marking period can be credit, no credit. And we're asking that, even though, we're asking that you do two hours, you're doing at the elementary level about three hours a day, so 15 hours a week, we're asking for each class that you would have one assignment turned in. So you'd turn in one math assignment for the week, one reading assignment, one science assignment. And that would be, that would get feedback from the teacher. So teachers are being asked to give feedback on that one piece that they're turning in. And that's how credit is being determined. Now, we're not asking for 100% of the assignments to be turned in, but we're looking for 60% to receive credit at the end of the marking period. And so that went into that last bullet. In addition to earning credit in math and reading, we're asking again for the 45 minutes a week in iReady. And then if they're having a problem with the technology, there'll be another way to show that they're doing the math and the reading. And then for students with documented issues accessing and participating in learning activities for technology or other reasons, the schools are making efforts with those families and students so they can still engage in the learning activities. Is there any questions so far?
I do. Can I ask really quickly, Stefania? So one, what happens if, for example, a teacher has a student in their classroom who doesn't speak English, who English isn't their native language? Are there interpreting services that are, that a teacher can access or that a family would be able to access to have a conversation about, you know, the assignments or whatever other questions might come up?
So we've asked, so if those are Level 1 and Level 2 students, which often, sometimes they are, we have the ESL teachers working with them. And then further in the document, we talk about forming smaller groups, say 10 to 12 students with one adult in the building. And once we're, once you do that, you would assign those Level 1 and Level 2 speakers with someone that will speak that language. And then that's another safety net to make sure that everything's being communicated clearly. So it may not be that their homeroom teacher speaks the native language, but if they're a paraprofessional that's joining in on the lesson that can help clarify, that's, we do do that often in the schools.
Okay. And then before I ask if Barbara has any questions, can I ask, that assignment that's going to be submitted weekly?
Yes.
Is that separate from, that's separate from what they're doing in iReady?
Yes, but all of that is included in the hours. So it's not that you're going to do, we'll just give it as an example, as a day, you're not going to do three hours of work and then another 30 minutes of iReady. Those 15 minutes for reading and 15 minutes for math are included in that three hours. And the one assignment being turned in, yes, is separate.
And that, those assignments are starting or will take effect starting yesterday, or took effect starting yesterday, the 27th?
Well, we would have liked it to, but we didn't bring it to school committee yet, so we have not passed out this policy.
Okay, okay.
So it would mean, it would probably be next Monday.
Okay, great. Thank you. Barbara, do you have any questions?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Denise. So if, if parents are having problems with the math and reading, iReady, math and reading, are teachers readily available for them to, for them with help?
Yes. And we're, and that's why we have this in there, Barbara, that if a parent or a student is reaching out to the teacher, we're giving them 24 hours to respond back. And if parents aren't getting a response back, they need to call the school.
Okay, perfect.
Because we want to be able, if they don't, we need to give them the support that they need. If they want to participate and are willing and someone isn't responding back to them, we need to know.
Right.
Right, exactly, definitely. So the one, the communication once a week, is that a specific day or just a day out of the week that they're communicating with parents?
So it would depend. At the elementary level, it could be at the beginning of the week. But as we move, high schools written similar to this, but you wouldn't meet with, say, math, English, and science on the same day. So we're asking that if you meet with your class on Wednesday, you would give them an entire week to do the assignment. And so it doesn't necessarily have to be on a Monday. It would be a week prior to when you want, a week prior to the expected turn in of the assignment.
All right, perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome.
May I ask how we're going to convey this? Is it going to go like on the website? Is it going to go, is it going to be like through ClassDojo? How are we going to make sure that everybody gets this? Or is it left up to each individual school to communicate it to those, to those families?
I, I believe we would be doing it both ways. It would go on the district. And then we found with some of these communications that parents are more apt to listen or receive the information if it comes directly from their school.
Yeah.
And so some people look at the SPS website and some people look at their school website or the school calls. So we're going to have to put the information out in multiple ways.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
When we get, you're welcome. So when we get into the secondary remote learning, the one thing that's going to change is the first bullet because it's not designed the same way as it is in elementary. So we're asking that teachers design two hours of work per class per week. And so because each high school, some have five classes, some have six classes, that could average from 12 to 16 hours a week depending on the number of courses that the student will take. But it's still an average of two hours per class. Once again, schools and teachers are coordinating, so they're having one communication. You don't want the students bombarded. You want them to know which day their class is meeting or the assignments are going to be recorded. The learning activities should be designed again to be completed independently with clear directions. But once again, the teacher is available for clarification. For direct teacher-led instruction activities, we're asking that to be pre-recorded. And this is especially important, I think, at the secondary level because you have some of these older students watching younger siblings if the other adults in the house are out working. And so you don't want them to miss that class because they have other obligations that they have to fulfill. So they could still be, they can still get the lesson if it's pre-recorded. We're asking the teacher to engage with each class once a week. You're checking in with them to make sure everyone's clear on the instructions and on what they have to do with the lesson. In addition to weekly, in kind, again, with special ed and ESOL, it's the same as the elementary. And then we get into grading for the fourth marking period. And so we're also doing credit, no credit, for secondary students with the expectation that they will be turning in one assignment per week per course. And in order to get credit at the end of the marking period, they would have had to turn in 60% of the assignments in that course. At the middle school, they also use iReady, so we would like them to continue doing that for 45 minutes in reading and 45 minutes of math. If students are participating in a different type of intervention, because we also have students that are in other interventions, if it's ESOL interventions or special ed interventions, we would like them to continue with those because those are online. And then once again, for students that are having issues participating with online activities for technology or other reasons, they're supposed to, teachers are making contact with them via phone and they're making other arrangements because we still want students participating, participate even if they have, if they don't have the technology necessary to do it online. Paul, do you want to?
So moving into final grades, and this is only relevant to secondary because we don't do final grades at the elementary level. For final grades, again, we're trying wherever possible to give students the benefit of the doubt. So just running through the three bullets in terms of our proposal for final grading. So students, if they do, so Stefania mentioned that at the secondary level, we're saying students need to complete six, one assignment per week per course, and they need to turn in 60% of those assignments between now and the end of the year to earn credit. In the secondary level, you get both a letter grade and a percentage. And so what we're saying is if you, if you complete 60% of the assignments in a given course, that would constitute credit, which we're going to give the student at 100%. If a student doesn't submit the assignments, they're going to get 59% rather than zero. And that's again, trying to give students the benefit of the doubt. The second bullet here is really speaking of, there are students who may have been really struggling in first, second, and third marking period. And because we're reducing the weight of the fourth marking period in the final grade, we didn't want that to hurt a student who actually did the work in the fourth marking period. So really what we're saying is if a student was close to that threshold of passing as they entered the fourth marking period, like maybe they were failing, but they were close, we want to give them the opportunity, if they earned the credit for the fourth marking period, to get up to that 60% that they need in order to pass. And so then the last piece of this is the weighting. So in our grading policy in the district, you can see for high school students, we grade 22.5% of the final grade as each marking period grade and 10% is the final exam. Now that a decision has been made that schools close for the rest of the year, there's not a really great way to do final exams. So the proposed weighting for a year-long high school course is that 35% of the final grade would be for each of the first and second marking periods, so that's 70% total. 20% would be the third marking period, 10% would be the fourth. So just given the issues, just the many challenges students and families are facing right now, we want to reduce the weight of the third and fourth marking period in determining that final grade. And you can see for semester courses, so we have some courses that didn't start until the beginning of the third marking period, for those, we would have the weight be 70% third marking period because we actually had some live instructional time in the third marking period and 30% fourth marking period. And you can see for middle school final grades, the same weight, so 35, 35, 20, and 10 for year-long courses and then 70, 30 for semester-long courses. So that's really, that's our proposal in terms of how to adjust the calculation of final grades to give students the benefit of the doubt.
May I, may I ask, Paul, what's going to happen to their GPAs? How does that get calculated?
So.
Particularly for like the seniors or, and maybe not even just for the seniors. I know, I'm sure it's something that seniors might be worried about, but more so, you know, those juniors who are, you know, thinking about next year and the college application process comes, you know, very quickly in the new school year. How is, how is that going to, going to work?
So it's part of why we're trying to give students the benefit of the doubt. So the, the good news, I guess, is that the GPA is calculated only on final grades. So the marking period grades aren't part of the GPA calculation at all. And so that's really part of why we're heavily weighting the first and second and reducing the weight of the third and fourth. So, so, so ultimately, the grade that will affect the GPA is that final grade that's based on these weights that you see here. And so for the most part, again, we're trying to give students the benefit of the doubt. There certainly will be cases of, say, if there's, for example, a student who didn't do their strongest work in the first and second marking period and, and they had a plan to kind of make it up in the third and fourth marking period. There is a reality that, you know, that student's not going to be able to make up as much ground in the third and fourth because we're reducing the weight of the third and fourth marking period in the final grade. But I think ultimately, we felt like on balance, it was fairer to just reduce the weight of the third and fourth marking period for all students rather than try, you know, and emphasize kind of in the final grade, the work that was done while we were doing live instruction.
Barbara, do you have any questions?
No, no. I was, I was concerned about the GPA as well.
That was really on our mind as we came up and sliced and diced this as a gap at how to, how to impact on the GPA and everything. So that was a good question.
May I ask you, Superintendent, what happens or what efforts, I guess, are in place for some of the students that, that Paul might have even have alluded to who, you know, thought, I'm going to pick it up in the third or the fourth marking period? I guess more specifically, you, we hear a lot about the graduation coaches and the credit recovery, like what happens? Are those, are those individuals reaching out to students and like what does that look like? Because that seems to mean like it would be really important that at minimum they're turning in, you know, the, the bare minimum. These are some of the students that might, might be struggling more than those who did very well first and second, you know, marking period.
Yeah, so that's a great question. We put, we're, we're continuing with all the online credit recovery pieces for, for our high school students so they can continue on that path, making up courses and completing those courses online. So we're really reaching out and doing that. All of our staff, we're urging to reach out to kids, to encourage participation so that we can get them to the finish line here. But it's an effort from the entire staff. But there's going to be a lot of reach out at those high schools so those kids were, had to make up certain things in order to graduate. All those online opportunities are continuing so we get them so they can complete all that. And we're also going to offer that help through the summer for kids that need a little more time because that's very important that we get, get all the good stuff. So it's an effort on the part of the entire staff, reaching out, making sure we engage those kids and give them the opportunities.
I should have just, sorry, just if I can add on the GPA question, I should have added when I was giving my example, the other, the other variable that helps a student with GPA is the students who do submit the assignments for that fourth marking period, the fact that we're giving them 100%. So we're basically saying, if you submit those assignments, we're giving you an A+ for the fourth marking period. And so even a student is saying, well, I was going to pick it up in the second half of the year. We are saying, we're giving you an A+ if you submit these assignments. And even though the weight is lower, that weight is at like 10%, you know, a student, if their average coming into the fourth marking period was in the 60s or 70s, even a 10% weight, giving them that A+ for the fourth marking period is, is going to give them a pretty sizable bump.
Right. No, that's a good point. Thank you, absolutely.
We set up everything we could to understand the situation and get everyone as reasonable support as we can to get them to the finish line.
So I noticed that this says final grades for 2019, 2020, and this is a policy that we're going to adopt for this current year, right? But we know that there's a lot of talk about what could potentially happen in the fall. And maybe this is a question from, for Attorney Phelps, would we have to adopt something new in September if, if in fact we find ourselves in a similar predicament? Or maybe if not in September at, you know, in the future, should we have to experience something like this again? Would we have to sort of revise this because of the dates or, or would we be revising it anyways because circumstances just might be different?
I, I think the circumstances will be different, the length of time. You know, clearly we're, we're a lot better at this if, if we have to do a second go round of it. So I, I, I think this is a good template to be used to evaluate if there is a subsequent situation. But I, it, it's all going to depend when in a semester, when in this marking period shutdown occurs, but.
Yeah, because this was all designed on a March 12 shutdown and how to finish off the year. So if we were to hit something next year, we'd have to come up with a different design. We could probably use some of this framework, but it wouldn't be the same. We definitely, so this would only be for the remainder of this year with our intent. If we're back normally next year, we go back to our traditional marking system. If we come back and there's a, some kind of problem, we'd have to design something new because it would be hitting, you know, if it was hitting at the beginning of the year. So it would have to look different. So it's only for the remainder of the year, but a great question.
Okay. All right. That's good.
All right. If there's nothing further, could we have a motion to recommend this particular policy? And I can't read it. Teri, I'm not sure if you could bring it back up for me, to the full school committee?
So moved.
So we don't, we don't need it? We're good? Do you want me to pull it back up?
Yeah.
I'll, I'll just approve it as.
Yeah, just.
Approve it as written.
As written on the agenda. That's not a problem.
If we could have a motion to approve it as written?
Yeah.
Yes. So moved.
Okay, so moved by Barbara, seconded by myself, all in favor. I, the matter passes.
Perfect.
All right. Is there a second item on the agenda?
There is.
All right.
It's a project management course for the High School of Science and Technology.
Yes.
That we wanted to move forward. Is Kevin on or Paul are you presenting this?
I think I'm presenting it. So I can, let me just pull up, I'll share real quickly. This, I believe these materials were sent, and so I'll just go through this.
They were. Okay.
Yes, and so can, can folks see that? Or is it too small? Let me bring it up.
And you can see it.
I will go through it quickly. So the High School of Science and Technology is requesting to approve a new course to be added to our curriculum. It's a project management course. It's an elective course to be taught, obviously, at the high school level. This is, I, a lot of credit to, to Principal Liam and the staff at SciTech. They designed this. So they had a partner, the district's part of the Massachusetts Personalized Learning Initiative or MAPLE. And staff at the High School of Science and Technology in partnership with MAPLE actually designed this project management course. And it's a full-year class. Again, it's a, it's a cross-disciplinary elective. So the way this course works, you can see the timeline there at the top. Students will complete two large-scale projects over the course of the school year. The first one will be a guided project. And as you can see, their plan is that first project will be actually digging, researching, and developing proposals about how to address food security and food insecurity in the city of Springfield. So they're trying to work to develop really interesting, relevant, and timely project-based experiences for the students. And then in the second semester, the students would engage in a student-driven project where they would identify a topic that the students want to work on as a group. And so in the syllabus, you can see there are rubrics that define what was, what students are supposed to learn over the course of this. And then you can see, I won't go through them all, but the, the team at the High School of Science and Technology identified science standards, math standards, and English language arts standards that will be reinforced as a part of students participating in this project management course. And the intent is it, you know, gives them some real-world experience. The idea is that over the course of these projects, they'd be talking to experts in the field. So for example, during that first semester project, they might be talking with members of Springfield's Food Policy Council to get input on this issue of food security and security. So I think it's an exciting opportunity for students to engage in, in something close to, close to real-world work that is cross-disciplinary. So I, I will stop there and happy to take questions if there are questions about the particular course or the details.
Sure. Do you mind scrolling down really quickly, Teri? Barbara, do you have any questions?
Yes, I have a question. Thanks, Denise. Will they do outside work regarding this management course?
When you say.
Yeah, out in the field.
Yes, yeah. So the idea is that they would interview real practitioners who are working in the area that their projects are addressing?
All right. And that will start in the second semester, you said, or?
No, they'll, they'll do some in the first. So in the first semester, the whole class is working on one project together on food security. And they would, they would engage with real experts in food security during that project as well. But in the second semester, they'd be able to choose a project of their own. And I should have added, part of this, the College Board had added a new AP class called the AP Capstone. And it's, it's essentially, it's an AP course where students complete a year-long project. So part of what the High School of Science and Technology is thinking is this is the precursor course, that students would take this course and subsequently would be able to take the AP Capstone. That students would take this course and subsequently would be able to take the AP Capstone course, which is a very rigorous full-year, students engage in a capstone project of their own design.
Okay, all right, perfect. Thank you. What grade is this elective going to be offered at?
And I think we're requesting approval to just add it to our high school catalog for nine, twelve. I think their intention is probably eleventh grade. That was the idea that students could then take the AP Capstone in the twelfth grade.
Yeah, yeah, eleven, twelve, yeah.
Okay, all right. But I mean, this, this sounds, this sounds great, especially if they get to see the process through with an actual subject and then be able to decide on their own subject the second half. That sounds like a great experience. Barbara, do you or would you like to make a motion to approve this, this new course as written on the agenda?
Yes, so moved.
Great, seconded by myself, all in favor. I have it. All right, so we'll see these two items on the agenda for, on our full meeting on the thirtieth. Right. This coming Thursday. Any other items, Superintendent?
No, that's all we have. Thank you so much. This was great.
All right, you know, we're going to get really good at this and then it'll be.
Yes, we are.
Yeah.
Yes, indeed. We're learning.
Well, it's good to see you all. I'm glad you guys are all well. So we will see each other on Thursday.
We really appreciate your support and thanks for following up on this. We, it was so important we got this done on time so the kids know the parameters and what they're being asked to do. So really thank you for stepping up for us.
Thank you guys all for, for what you guys are doing. I, it's, you know, I can attest that this has been a very interesting experience at home, working, and driving school age, school, school-aged children. So, you know, hoodles to you guys who have done this for a long period of time because I've suspended my kids over and over again over the last three weeks. So thank you guys all so much. And so we'll see each other on Thursday.
We really appreciate your support. Thank you so much.